It is 6:30. I am calling our meeting to order. The first order of business is, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we do not.
Okay. So now we are going to look at the select board minutes. These are meeting minutes from October 7th.
I'm approving the minutes of October 7th.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. I would like to look them over. Hearing, no comments. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Cessus. Next are pay orders. And these are, was it one sheet of paper?
It's on the back.
It's on the back of...
You have... It was in the...
I'll make a motion for $30,915.24 for the pay orders.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Please look over and see if you have anything you'd like to discuss. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the pay orders?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. We will not be having a road commissioners' report. Phil will not be here this evening. Moving on to honorable mentions. The town would like to thank me for donating a portion of my salary for the Town Hall concert featuring Jeff C. Reel. We'd also like to commend the Wallingford Road Crew and road crews across the state for winning the annual municipal service award from Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns for all their hard work during the federally declared disasters in 2023 and 2024. To all the citizens who continue to donate to the Boy with the Boot Fund, and to Bruce Duchesne for filling in at the transfer station. Looking at who we have here this evening, I don't think we'll have any public comments. And now we're going to move on to quarterly financials. So these are for the second quarter.
No, so this is the first quarter of the year.
And close quarter, so this is the first quarter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So going down to income, the only two items I wanted to point out was the Highway State Fund, which is 4502, which is over budget, which is a good thing. The state gave us a little over $20,000 extra this year, and that was just something they had more money than expected, so they billed it out to the towns. And then under miscellaneous, 4540, 110 of that is the loan proceeds that came for the one we paid down with the Grader.
Oh, yes.
So I had to put it there.
Well, that's great.
And then going down to expenses, just a couple of things under administration, the reappraisal expenses of 5004, 5002F, $17,000. I will eventually take that out of the CD by June 30th. I'll, you know, I'll take the money to offset that.
Okay.
But we don't need it right now because taxes have come in. And then under Town Government Operations on page 2, the RFP expenses, number 5161, a little over $40,000. I'll take that out of the RFP account as well.
Okay.
To fund those. Nothing's been paid out yet. Well, we did pay out the library, but that was the first meeting in October. But those appropriations, those will be paid out in December. The highway, under the highway, the only thing is under the, on page 3, under the Grader, which is number 5346. So 110 offsets that, 114,000 figure.
Okay.
But everything else is in line.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? No, I think we're good. Thank you so much.
You got enough people coming to the meeting tomorrow night?
Yes. You're coming, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I was planning on being there as well.
Great.
Okay, so moving on to... What's up?
Tom Ford should be here.
Not here yet. Are we a little early?
We still have the Boy in the Boot beforehand.
So...
That could be early.
Well, we're rolling ahead. We had no work to finish.
Oh, I do, yeah, I opened up the wrong one. I had it open, then I switched over.
Month early.
So we're moving on to... Was Wallingford Day?
You could do the electrical.
We could do the electrical?
Under Town Hall Heating and Cooling.
Oh, great. So let's do the electrical update estimates.
Unless you want to wait until Tom for that.
I think we can discuss it. Okay, so we have, it looks like three estimates here. One is from Jeff Duchesne.
We're just started.
We were just starting.
Sounds familiar.
Good, good.
Excellent, okay. So we're on to Town Hall Heating and Cooling. And we have your solar request for proposal, the RFP. Do we have any questions?
So Mark had a question last meeting about what the Green Mountain Power connection fees would be.
Right.
So I did look into that. So there's a one-time meter connection fee of 110. There's a one-time cost-sharing tariff fee of $37 per kilowatt, which we're proposing 22. It could be anywhere from 22 to 25, I guess, depending on what they, what the people bid. So that works out to about $800. And then the, since it's going, we go in the town garage, there's a transformer outside of the town garage that would need to be upgraded. And they predicted $3,000 approximately to upgrade that. So I think all told, if we consider, it'd probably be less than $4,000 for all the, to cover all the GMP connection fees for...
About $2,000, you said?
The, the, upgrading the transformer was 3,000. So all told, all the different fees would probably be less than 4,000.
A little less, just shy.
Yeah. I mean, there were 3,000, wasn't it?
Plus tax. Unfortunately, Green Mountain Power has lots of hidden taxes.
Okay. So what did people feel about the RFP?
Yeah, I didn't see, just quickly reading through it, I didn't see any problems with it. Get things moving.
Are we all good with that? Can we do this by consensus?
Yes.
So do we approve the RFP?
Yes.
Okay. There we go, so there's that. Now, the next is for the electrical. There's three estimates here for electrical for heat pump installation. These are updated estimates from the siren service with surge protection at Town Hall. We have one from Duchesne Electric, and that's for 326539. We have one from MEI Electrical Contractors for 3700, and one from Rocky's Electric for 2324 and 83 cents.
What do we know about Rocky? Is there a rule?
There is a rule.
Looks like he is from West Rutland. It says from the address on the invoice that Rocky's is from West Rutland.
Uh huh. Tom met with him, he came and gathered that.
He did a site visit, but I can't answer questions for him. I don't know too much more about it other than that, that he showed up and looked at everything. I think he did, actually did a load count, if I'm not mistaken, Sandy.
Yes, he was the one that thought we could not, didn't have to go with the siren, but he gave his approach anyways.
Well, he was the runner-up for the Rutland Regional, I mean Rutland Herald's Best of the Best.
Excellent. Oh, really?
He was runner-up, winner was Rob Stubbs.
Oh, yes.
So he's got friends.
Okay.
Voted.
Now is his, is he, he's proposing to do the same work that the other bids are? And do we have the one from MEI here?
He got this one here, isn't he? Yeah.
So I think that was the updated bid, correct, Sandy? The updated bids all have the equal scope across all three.
So it's all equal scope?
Yes.
Initially, they weren't, but Sandy recontacted them online. Some of them didn't have the full surge protections we were looking for, and then Mark had said last week, excuse the, do the siren, tap into the siren now. So we made sure that all three of them considered that as well. So I think there, it should be apples to apples.
Okay. I can't find my MEI. Mark, can I just take a peek at yours when you're done looking at it?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
The owner's name, Jeff Rockwell. Put in his business license.
We're trying to figure out where he lost $1,000 on this, but...
Yeah. And it looks like all 8250.
But it's not.
Together, the guy corrected. Okay. Thank you for letting me see that way. Can you see where the $1,000 less is?
Well, no, because Rocky, he's, he only, didn't really itemize it. He did it...
You had, I gave, I sent you all three, right?
Yes.
These are, if you want to look at them again while they're looking at them, those are all three.
So what do people think? The lowest bid is Rocky's.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know, that's why it's a little concerning.
By a significant amount.
So one, I wish I maybe one difference, is it looks like he's providing surge protection for the siren service. So the siren and the heat, the new heat pumps will have surge protection.
Right.
I don't know if the other guys, I just read his. Do the other guys have the full building surge protection? I think that's...
Yeah, Duchesne had surge protection for the three-phase, so the same thing, he put in surge protection.
Okay. One of them, I thought, had whole building surge protection.
He did on his last one.
Okay.
Or was not clear.
So here's, I guess, the only thing I have concerning. He says he can do it in eight hours.
Rocky?
Yeah. And that, because that's, that's a $1,000 difference.
And that's it?
That's where it is.
You said he came for a site visit, so he knows.
Yeah. As I said, 16 hours on that one, and...
Yeah. So the only, I mean, Jeff had, Duchesne has worked here before.
Right.
He knows the building. Rocky visited for, you know, a one-hour site visit. MEI, I don't think, Sandy, they were, they're a little further away.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they didn't visit. They had me send pictures and stuff.
Okay, that's right.
They didn't visit, no.
Okay.
And they did call me a couple times with some questions, but I think they, they had what they needed, but they don't, they have not seen it in progress.
So... How would we like to go with this, do you think? I was kind of looking between, with them being a little bit more distant and more hours involved, I'm thinking of between Duchesne and Rocky's Electric.
They don't charge travel time, I don't think. I'll move Rocky. Do it.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I get, my only concern is the half of the labor rate.
What happens if it runs over? Is that your concern?
Is there a second for Rob? Did you, you made a motion, Rob?
Rob made a motion, it hasn't been seconded yet.
Yeah, but even if it's doubled, it's still a comparable price.
Okay, just forgot, just for...
So Rob's made a motion for Rocky's, I've seconded it. I think we're still discussing, so what are we thinking?
Oh, just like, even if you double the labor, though, it'll still be, it'll be right on par.
That's right, it would be.
Yeah, so even, we're not...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would basically be the same price. So what do we think? We have a motion for Rocky.
I'll see you.
So I'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Rocky's Electric.
Just glad, glad to get bids.
Yeah, it was great to get bids. It was really great to get bids. So now moving on, under the brackets. Now we're talking about, I think, the compressors? Bill Lawson strongly recommended compressors be placed on brackets beneath the fire escape behind Town Hall. It's better for them to be off the ground. They'll be protected under the fire escape. There's a photo with the exact points each compressor would be placed. Okay. And the completion date on that is November 30th.
Right. And he signed his contract to send us the certificate of insurance, so he's all ready to go on this. We just need to know where.
And those are the pictures showing where he recommends that they be.
Have we had room in the furnace?
No, I guess not.
No?
No. No, I mean with the furnace. What do we think of the compressors on the brackets outside the building, Mark?
My original concern was the historical portion.
Yes.
But looking at where Bill's proposing to put them, that foundation's been replaced anyways.
Okay.
So as long as it stays in the foundation, none of the brick.
Okay, then we'll be okay.
It's been replaced, or skimmed on the outside.
Right.
Already compromised.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that?
If you just want to do it by consensus.
So all those in favor of following Bill's recommendation with the compressors on the brackets?
Turn it loose. Is he done yet?
I thought that's what the specs were anyway.
I'm not sure if that's...
No, I had concerns with...
The building.
With the...
The historical.
Historical, but...
Yeah, but I thought they were okay with this, the historical people.
Well, they, they said we don't have an opinion. Until we did it, then they'd have an opinion.
Then they'll have an opinion.
So, but my, looking at where he, well, that's the way they work, so...
They don't work.
They don't work. Putting them where Bill was suggesting? That's, the foundation's already been replaced, or reinforced, I should say, probably.
You mean the wall or the...
The wall.
Wall, and he'll put down pavers or something?
No, he's going to mount them right on the wall.
Oh, okay.
In the location in the, right in those pictures.
On the concrete. So that's my only concern. He goes in the bricks and we, you know, then you're, then you're going to get issues from the historical. But if he can stay in that, already rebuilt concrete, I think, will be okay.
Yeah. I like it.
Okay. Okay, we are good.
Let them have it.
We'll go back to the RFP for just one quick question.
Sure.
We have the bid opening listed for November 18th. I just want to confirm that we do in fact have a select board meeting that day.
The 18th?
The November 18th, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
So Heather Johnson was planning on being here. We are still ahead of our agenda. Why don't we go ahead and see if there's any select board comments or concerns?
You can appoint their recommendation if you want, Todd Galliano.
So the Wallingford Day Committee recommended appointing Todd Galliano to fill the seat vacated by Jane Duda. Would we like to appoint their recommendation?
Was it posted that there was a vacancy?
Yeah, Jane Duda resigned.
Yeah, Jane Duda resigned.
No, but I mean, was it posted that there was a vacancy? So somebody else knew besides the committee that there was a vacancy?
It was posted on the website, the municipal website where there says municipal vacancies.
Huh?
It was posted on the website.
It was.
Other municipal vacancies.
And I think it's possible it was in the, I'm not sure if it was in the newsletter.
Was it in the newsletter?
It may have been too quick if, I don't know if that was vacant.
Too quick, but it was on the website.
It was on, listed on the website, yes.
Was it from which forum?
I don't, was it from which forum?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, she just resigned the last meeting.
Yeah, so two weeks ago.
I mean, if there's somebody else that wants it too, it's, we can, you can increase the numbers.
Okay.
Because it was like seven, it was seven, then it went down to five. So, I mean, this fills the five.
This fills the five, so other people could step forward if they want.
We would be happy to add.
So this would not get other people out from being able to join the committee if they were to.
But has anybody expressed an interest?
No, nobody else did. No.
No.
So...
Not even Todd?
No, Todd attended the meeting.
Yes. He was at the meeting and wants to join the committee. So...
Make the motion, we appoint Todd Galliano.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Too easy.
Shh, okay. And we're, let's see if there's any other business?
So before we go on to select board comments and concerns, come town meeting day, I will not be running for select board again. I can't emphasize that enough. I am retiring for good.
I heard.
So if you know somebody...
Okay. Mark, we thank you for the time you put in that. We really do appreciate it.
I want to make sure that everybody understands that no write-ins, because I'm...
Well, we're going to write you in.
You can write me in all day long, but be prepared to have someone else.
You're the best constable. All you have to do is one percent of the voters, I think. And you can run.
Yeah, but don't do it.
I'm sure somebody's going to step up.
Just like I said, try to find somebody, because...
You know, the four of us can, can, you can't.
And there'll be two openings this, this March, right?
Who else?
Justin, too.
Justin's up.
So, if he runs or not, but there's two.
There's two, two seats up every year, a three-year and a two-year.
And also the Fire District Budget Committee. Remember for Zone 3? I think you make a good one. It's once a month, or once a year.
Yeah. I don't know really how that functions.
You, it is the simplest thing in the world.
Yeah.
They literally have it all laid out. Everything is reoccurring. Every five years, everything gets replaced. So it's, this is how much it costs. And this is the five-year portion of it. As simple as that. I just, again, for the last, last year, they called me the night before to remember to, to go. I'm sitting there and I'm having dinner at 6:30. I'm going, I'm supposed to be somewhere. And I sit down.
It's, the Fire Department still, whether we have a fire protection budget committee or not, is still...
Well, it's districts, this is a kind of a... This is a, this is a sorry point to me. I'm, I'm, you're the only vote, or there's two votes, that District 3, which is everybody that lives outside, other than East Wallingford, that lives outside the Fire District. We get, the majority of the taxpayers get two votes. So it's, you know...
The taxpayers don't get to vote on it.
No.
You know, that's...
You are their representative.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And that takes a change in the charter to make that happen. They'd love it. They, the Fire Department would love to come back under the tutelage of the town. But it takes a charter change, you know, a petition signed in two years.
Oh, okay.
And they asked for that, or they didn't, but it was brought up two, three years ago. And the Fire District didn't want to, or the, the Fire District didn't want to let them go, but...
Oh.
That's kind of a, but they, the Fire Department would like, you know...
But the Fire Department, so, huh, very interesting.
You can discuss this letter, Kathy, if you want, let your whole...
Oh, yes. So is this letter here? Actually, I was just going to bring that up. So we have a letter here. There were a couple of, Sandy received a couple of complaints and recommendations for a reduction on the speed limit near Roots 103 and 140 intersection, which was reconfigured with plans for Bridge 15. Both residents who have brought up the complaints said there's been near misses on the road and that there should be a posted warning of hidden driveways. Sandy has written up a letter addressed to Laura Stone, who is the scoping engineer. on this project. And basically what this letter says is that, um, the select board urges V-Trans and state officials to take these complaints very seriously. Um, they request that V-Trans consider a lower speed limit, install the hidden driveway signs as residents have selected. And also asking for where an update on the Bridge Pot Project is. Um, so far you haven't received any new information from Laura on this, have you, Sandy?
Whatever, not on the bridge, no.
Okay.
I sent her an email, she responded that they would consider, I think I forwarded the emails to all of you. She consider the state could maybe do a traffic study for speed limits.
Okay.
And, uh, and then she didn't, she didn't have any new information about the bridge.
Okay. So.
This is asking for
Yes.
the speed limit on Route one oh three to be reduced, not.
Just in that section.
Not one forty.
At a little intersection.
Just that intersection. The intersection of one, one oh three and one forty, right at the intersection. To reduce speed.
You can't have, you can't have an intersection alone.
It would, it would have to be a staggered stop.
Would have to be
Yes.
up by, uh, bushes. You know, have to be up by the citco at least.
Right.
Until somewhere, but, uh.
What do we think? What about the hidden driveways? No?
I don't think we have to urge V-Trans to, uh, take these concerns seriously. I think they do, but, uh, I don't know if we need to be urging them. It, it, it implies that they're not thinking about safety.
Okay.
Huh?
Okay.
You know? Other than that, it's, pass it on, it's probably the proper thing to do. If we get, if we get comments and we don't have the answers, state does, so.
And also it says in the letter, um, inviting V-Trans, um, to an upcoming meeting, to hear directly from residents.
So Laura Stone, is that the person you, you contact?
Yeah.
That's a overseer of?
Yeah, she's the head of the project. She was at the public hearing.
Oh, ahead of this project?
Yes, she was at, had the upstairs when they had the huge, um.
Okay.
If, if anything, I think this letter also sort of highlights that we are interested in knowing what, what is going to be happening.
I think.
With this situation.
Questioning where are we at?
I think we're at the end. I don't think there's anything gonna happen with that bridge.
They need to do something with it, cause it's still.
Yes.
It's there, but it's not structurally sound.
Yes, they need to do something.
Whatever that decision is.
So if they're gonna remove it, it can't stay in the state it's in.
Remove the bridge, you're saying?
No, it's like whatever, it's not a done deal right now. They have to do, they have to still do something.
Yes.
I think.
Because you have a bridge with a hole and it's still sitting there.
Yeah.
So you cannot leave it in that state.
Well, it's good for, for pedestrian traffic.
No. You can't even.
You can't walk across it?
No.
It's, right now, it's in a state of limbo.
Right.
And.
We gotta blow it up?
Well, that's, so we need some answers and where they are.
We need some answers, and maybe this letter is a way of.
And when they were here before, they didn't do all the measurements and have all the information. It was actually very vague for.
I remember reading that paper, how sticky that was.
Yeah.
Sticky.
So do we want to send this letter or a different letter to?
Well.
I don't mind the, the urge sentence either. Uh, you know, I, I like the letter like it is.
Okay.
Fine.
What do you think, Mark?
Well, my concern is we're kinda torn. I don't, you, you know, I don't, we're a lot, haven't seen if people pay attention. It's not the end, it's not a, the way they did it was, was actually better than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, me too.
Um, I think we need to voice the residents' concerns to the state of Vermont. But at the same time, um, not sure if we want to word it as the select board takes these concerns very seriously. It would urge V-Trans and state officials to do the same.
So maybe that paragraph gets rewritten?
And maybe even take, maybe have them address it and look into it, not telling them what we think we should do. So, did you, did you look at the e, so in the email, that's kind of what I did. This is just, this, that, so that came from me on behalf of the town. Rather than, and I thought, mate, do you want to go one step further? We could just leave it at the emails, cause they got multiple emails.
Yeah, so if you've already, I mean.
Yes.
So if we've already emailed on it, maybe that's gonna cover what does everybody else think?
Yeah.
That's got all the pertinent information, right?
I think.
Yeah, okay.
I think the email will.
She's putting that word for us.
She's good. I mean, I, I would rather have answers and have them focus their energy on what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
There, there is something I think that we can do.
Yes, what?
Um, not really lowering the speed limit, but if we could get the Sheriff's Department to put one of their portable, uh, speed limit signs out there that flashes the speed might make people.
Would have to, would, would, what speed would it be?
The speed limit that is four and out.
Yeah.
Just making sure people understand.
Faster than the speed limit.
Right.
Not speeding, yeah, that's probably the.
I mean, that's a, I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna lower it, but we throw, just see if the Sheriff's Department can do that without the state.
Yeah, I remember, uh, Harold Boyman.
Speed signs.
The blinking light over in, in Mount Holly, that is a dangerous spot too.
The whole section to Lubbock can be dangerous and has a number of accidents.
Flashing light.
It's.
Farther towards, to, to alert people coming on that straightaway that something, something happened up here.
I, I would rather see the sheriff over there more often.
Oh, right.
So.
Well, you know, we can discuss.
Sorry, the, the number of accidents just next to my house alone because of going around those corners.
Did your email say?
Two days ago, three days ago.
You can come and talk to us.
Right, speaking. I'll wait for.
I sent you guys a copy, but let me, let me double check. I wanna see what I.
I wanted to bring up, I, I took a walk yesterday. And when I was walking, I walked down Waldor Lane, then I walked back towards Wallingford on Route seven. And when I was walking on Route seven, I saw our sign. And it didn't seem to be marking any speed, but there was a light on the bottom right corner that was orange, that kept like flashing on and off. So I don't know if that's a battery thing, if the.
It's, if it's early in the morning, you'll probably.
It was, this was late in the afternoon.
Should, it should be good. Cause I come by tonight, it was working.
It was working, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I came up with a, uh, I, I haven't got over it. I'm, I'm really hesitant on reprogramming them. And the reason I, the reason I say that is if people do the speed limit, they don't flash.
Right.
So you'll, if you were doing the speed limit, you'll never know they were, they flashed. That's just.
And I have to say, I've only seen one sign that doesn't flash at all. But the majority of signs that I see flash when someone's overseas.
I went by, and I pay attention now when I go by them.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yes.
And I'm sitting there going, I'm wearing my, oh, the state flowers this road, cause I've seen a flower in this road before. And I'm like, oh, now it's flashing, oh, that one's flashing. I'm like, yeah, I'm fine, I'm not.
Okay. So we are on to Wallingford Day rollover funds and we already, so just to let you know, um, we got ahead in our agenda, Heather. So we went ahead and approved the Wallingford Day recommendation of Todd Galliano on the committee.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so now let's go ahead and look at this. Um, so you would like to discuss rollover donations?
Yeah, so what we basically want to have the rollover donation funds for is because we'd like to start doing like fundraisers or donation things at different times. And we want to make sure the money is secured and doesn't go into the general fund. But, um, one of my main things was for it, because if we were to get like a whole bunch of donations and we didn't have the rollover fund and we made Wallingford Day like really big, then the next year we don't get hardly any donations and then it's not as good of a Wallingford Day as we'd like for.
Okay.
That, that, that requires a voter to people?
Yes. So this would be on the town meeting day one.
And what would it say?
Well, we could get the exact wording.
Hmm?
We can get the exact wording out.
Yeah.
The wording time.
I mean, would it be for one year or a three year or?
Well, just be an ongoing, ongoing rollover for, yeah.
Right. Just like the bridge fund and the building fund.
And the building fund.
Yeah. That's re-motivated.
Yes. Good. So what would we like to do? Are we good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Definitely.
Okay.
We're.
Yes. We are good with this. Okay. And I think, and I think, was there anything else?
Well, that was it for the.
Okay. Great, okay. Escape.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see. Today, property taxes were due at quarter thirty this afternoon. Hopefully, if everybody caught their payment in. Uh, let's see, and there's going to be on October thirtieth, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, um, feedback session on the regional plan. And they would greatly like our involvement in that event. And the information that we involved is there. So I think that is our agenda for this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.